Welcome to the January 19th, 2021 Planet Commission Tech Exchange Committee Meeting. My name is CJ Mann and I will be chairing today's meeting. We are operating in a virtual environment and we'll be doing so for the foreseeable future. I would like to ask for patience as we use this platform for our public meetings. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have any issues with our technology, please send a message to the moderator. Today's moderator will be Keegan McDonald. Today, we have two issues, items on our agenda today. I would like to ask for all commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of presentations. The first item that we'll be talking about today is TC 14-20 dealing with community gardens and with onsite sales. This text change would amend the UDO to modify requirements to allow for onsite sales for community gardens within residential zoning districts. This text change would also remove the requirement for a special use permit in order to conduct onsite sales and mixed use in special districts by requiring the onsite sales aspect to adhere to the limited use standards for produce standards already attained in the UDO. Staff, Mr. Eric Hodge, are you ready to present our text change amendments that we made for TC 14-20?
I am. I just need Keegan to pass me the share function so I can share my screen.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, so this is a comparative between the version that this committee saw last time. And since it's an underlying strike-through type ordinance, the changes between the version you saw this time and last time are actually shown in red and blue. So anything that's within the ordinance that's red, you would have seen last time, but we're proposing to remove with this ordinance. And anything in blue is being added. So if everyone understands that, I'll proceed with the use standard changes. So this is again for community gardens that wish to have sales air for their facility. And originally, the draft you saw last time limited the items for sale to items produced onsite. So that's in red. We're proposing to strike that and replace it with agricultural produce, whether grown onsite or otherwise. And we've also expanded it in keeping with the standards of produce stands elsewhere in the city. Whereas 25% of the onsite sales area can be devoted to the on, to sales of homemade food goods, such as baked goods, jams, and relishes. So it doesn't have to be agricultural produce in its original form. We've also modified the maximum sales area. The original proposal was 2,000 square feet per lot. There was some concern that that perhaps was too large, particularly in a residential zoning district, and that there needed to be some sort of corollary between the amount of sales area they could have as it related to the size of the lot. So we're proposing to delete the 2,000-square-foot cap and replace that with a 600-square-foot cap for lots that are less than 10,000 square feet in size. A 9,000, excuse me, a 900-square-foot maximum sales area for lots that are between 10,000 and 40,000 square feet in size, and up to 12,000 square feet for lots that are greater than 40,000 square feet in lot size. And those numbers came from the maximum square footage for accessory structures within the ordinance. And so rather than just cross-referencing those regulations, we've actually embedded those specific hard numbers into this ordinance. So it's kind of a one-stop shop for folks who are looking to do this rather than them having to toggle around to various code sections. The next modification was removing the parking requirement that we originally proposed for one space for every 200 square feet of sales area and a minimum of three parking spaces. So those are proposed for deletion from the draft ordinance. And that's being replaced with an exemption for sales area of 600 square feet or less. Require no off-street parking associated with the sales use. And then if they are between 901 square feet and 1,200 square feet of sales area, they need two spaces. And if they're less, if they're more than six or less than nine, excuse me, more than 600 and less than 900 square feet, they would only require one parking space. So it's kind of a tiered approach. The smaller ones, no parking. The medium-sized sales area, one parking space. And then the largest of the sales area options would never require more than two off-street parking spaces. This next change to Romanate 6 is just taking it out because it was redundant about when located in a residential district. All these Romanate use standards listed in herein are applicable only to residential districts. So we just struck that language because it was duplicative. There was some concern at the last meeting, I think by Mr. O'Haver, that we may, staff may interpret this requirement for waste collection facilities to be something more substantial, like a dumpster with a pretty hefty enclosure. So we've noted, just for clarity, that these may be portable in nature, could be rollout bins, et cetera. That's what we meant by that language. And have clarified what that screening would look like to note that it would be landscaping or fencing or walls similar to any principal buildings on the site. Just to clarify what that sentence above about minimizing visual impact was intended to mean at the plan review level. The next change is removing the special use permit requirement for onsite sales areas when the community garden is located in a mixed-use or commercial district or a special district. So it felt like if we were allowing them by right in a residential district, assuming the community garden has a special use permit already for its existence, we felt like to require a special use permit for a sales area in a district that otherwise allows for commercial activity was no longer relevant, given the changes we're making to the residential district. So we're deleting that and replacing it within an expectation that any onsite sales area in a community garden in a mixed-use or special district would be an administratively-approved project, but they would need to meet the standards for produce stand. So whether onsite sales are off, the produce stand in a commercial district would follow the same rules across the board, whether they're affiliated with a community garden on the premise or selling produce off-premise. And we've also noted that they would need to get a zoning permit showing consistency with those conditions prior to the establishment of the use and any physical onsite changes they wish to make thereafter as time goes on. And then the one last change was at the request of plan review staff that instead of having a five-day effective date, we proposed moving that to 30 days so they can modify their application forms and get staff up to speed on any changes in the regulations. So given where we are in the growing season, I don't anticipate that that additional delay will cause a lot of problems for community gardens, given there's very few things that they're growing onsite currently. But that would still give plenty of time for the spring and summer harvest to be up and running. Unless you have any questions of me, this is kind of the overview of what we've done based on the direction we received back in November when this was last discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Committee members, do we have any questions for Mr. Hodge before moving on? Not sure if I see everybody. Give me one second. I'm not seeing any questions. Keegan, do we have anybody from the public sign up to speak?
Yes, we do have one member of the public, I believe, who may just have a question that they'd like to pose, either the board or staff.
Okay. Okay.
So I can go ahead and unmute her if you'd like.
You said Mrs. Purview?
Excuse me, I think it's Tammy Purdue.
Okay, okay, we're ready for Mrs. Purdue.
Okay. Tammy, I'm going to unmute you now.
Okay. Thank you all much for entertaining this. We here at the Well Fed Garden, Community Garden are really excited to be able to do this. And if you guys hadn't done what you did, we're so excited today. One question we had was this, the rule about the signage. Is it for permanent signage that, let's see, it's on, where is that? Down on five. Signage shall be limited to one sign of no more than the 12 square feet. Can I put up a sign that says that there's a farm stand here today that's temporary?
That would be subject to the sign ordinance. I know there are some allowances for temporary signs. I would have to look and see what those are, but.
Okay.
I don't do sign permits, so bear with me while I read the ordinance.
Okay.
So you're talking about like an A-frame type sign?
Yeah, yeah, yes. Sandwich board kind of thing or just.
Let me see what the ordinance for that says. So we would need, so if you look in Unified Development, Section 7.3.12, A-frame signs, there is a note that a small, unlit, freestanding onsite portable ground sign that is displayed during business hours and removed when business is closed does not require a sign permit.
Perfect.
It has different limitations, though. It's limited to six square feet, a maximum height of five feet.
Okay, easy. Okay, excellent.
Let me verify whether or not, I don't know if those are allowed in residential districts or if we specify.
Okay.
That might be something we need to make a modification or a clarification on. Let me look. So currently, A-frame signs are not shown as allowed signage type in a residential district. Currently, they're only allowed a small tracked ID sign, which is, I think, anticipated to be of a more permanent nature.
Okay, so.
I don't know, Justin Rametta, the city's, any administrator has any thoughts in response to your question? Justin, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would like to add that Eric's correct, these types of signs are not allowed currently in residential districts. So the provision in this text change for the ones 12 square foot sign would be allowed, you know, once the, once the permit is obtained, once the zoning permit is obtained. But additional sign, additional A-frame sign would not be allowed based on.
But you think they would have to do that signage type under like a tracked ID or a wall sign? I mean, I guess a tracked ID.
Are you, are you talking about to comply with, with Section 2.5 of this ordinance?
Well, does comply with the signage ordinance, what type of? It just says signage is limited to 12 square feet, three and a half feet. But it doesn't say what that is. That's essentially kind of what a tracked ID or a very small, low-profile ground sign is. It's actually four square foot smaller, but that's the only type of sign allowed in a residential zoning district per the table of allowed signage types. Unless we want to specify herein, you know, some clarification that they can, that can include an A-frame type sign, even if otherwise prohibited by that, by that table.
I think the committee can certainly do that if that's their recommend, you know, they can certainly make that recommendation if that's their wish.
That would be, that would be really fabulous.
So are you looking to have a permanent sign and then an additional?
No, I mean the.
Or just one in total?
Just one in total. The Well Fed has a permanent sign, the community garden already does, and we already have our zoning permit. But we, we just need to say that we have a farm stand 12 feet back here.
That's a good question. I don't know if this ordinance anticipates an additional 12 square feet of signage beyond what a community garden can ordinarily have. I would assume it does.
Commissioner, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Chairman Mann. Not, Eric, not to ask you to sort of read into or try to figure out the ordinance, but what is the issue with the temporary A-frame sign in residential districts? I'm just trying to think of.
There's an issue, say, I'm just saying the ordinance currently does not allow for that sign type in a residential district.
No, and I'm glad you thought of that and looked it up. That was perfect. I'm just trying to figure out, I'm just trying to think in what condition I would have an issue with the temporary sandwich board sign in a residential neighborhood. I mean.
I mean, typically, we don't have signage in residential neighborhoods other than to identify residential institutions, such as a church or a school or the entrance to a subdivision. Other than that, we generally don't have commercial content signs. So the ordinance doesn't really allow for them. There's the, you know, the real estate signs, those things. I can look and see if they might fall under something of that nature, more temporary. So I'm a little at a loss here. I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
Yeah, I probably shouldn't say this publicly, but the residential signs and the political signs would probably be more of a nuisance to me than someone putting out an A-frame sign for a farm stand or a.
Commissioner Fox?
I'd be interested in updating the language to allow the A-frame during operation.
Where, where would you propose making that amendment?
That Romanate 5 might be the appropriate place. I'll rely on Mr. Hodge to tell me what's, what's the appropriate location.
We'll discuss it internally with the attorney's office and the zoning administrator, but I think we have something for your meeting next week that satisfies. We may have to make modifications to Chapter 6. I'm hoping not, but I can't, I can't really say for certain in terms of not Chapter 6, but Chapter 7, the sign regulations. If we can just essentially override that by content herein, maybe Mr. York wants to comment.
I was gonna say, I was, I was contemplating a phrase that said, notwithstanding the limitations and restrictions of Article 7.3, and then described what signage you would allow to this use. But let us look at that and work on some language.
Okay, okay. Mr. Hodge, I can't see your screen. I think it's a blank. I just wanted to see if there were any other questions or any other comments we had moving forward. Yeah, yeah, I can see it now. That's, that's perfect. Thank you. Well, me personally, I am fine with the way things are written and I appreciate the amendments that we have made to this section. I don't have any questions or comments other than the ones we've just made. So I don't know if we need to make a motion now to move this to full planning commission or if we just want to hold it until those changes are made.
I think we can make it and move it if the will of the committee is. So it's a fairly discreet change.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to move it and then with the assumption that we'll get those changes next Tuesday. Well, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve amendments as proposed to TC 14-20. Any other comments, Mr. York, that I need to make other than, than that?
For the committee recommendation, no. But at the Planning Commission next week, we'll want to have consistency statements and, you know, and the public benefit language.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll move to, move this, this text change, TC 14-20, next week to full planning commission for review. I have a second. My Commissioner Fox, all in favor? Show of hands. Okay, motion approves, four to zero. Let's look at our next case. Give me one second as I pull it up. Our next case is TC 16-20 dealing with floodplain regulations to amend the UDO with new restrictions on development within the floodplains. Justin Rametta will be presenting on this topic.
Mr. Rametta? I know just enough about floodplain regulations to probably confuse all of you and myself. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ben Brown with Engineering Services, who's a better expert here. He's gonna be walking you through this one.
All right, thanks, Justin. I saw your name up there. I just saw Ben pop up. Okay, Mr. Brown, take the floor.
Nah, that was just a joke I played on Justin's. Anyway, let me share my presentation. But my presentation is gonna go through kind of a little history of kind of how we got here and what the regulation changes encompass, and we'll go from.
Okay.
All right, I think you should be seeing point now. And let, in, let me make sure you're still seeing the. Is it in that two-window format or is it in the single-window format?
It's one window, but there's a smaller.
Okay, yeah, let me change it.
It's in the two-window format.
Yeah, right.
How's that? We seen a single window now? Perfect. All right. Well, thank you. As Justin said, this is for TC 16-2020, the possible changes to the floodplain regulations. Kind of, I'm gonna start off here with a kind of intro to the floodplain. This is a short video as part of our outreach for this regulation change that we had about floodplain to kind of go through the different aspects of the floodplain and why it's there and why it's here. And I think it'd be good for everybody to kind of take a look at, so. It's, it's about a minute and a half long, so it's not too long, but it's good little information piece. And I'm just hearing, you guys aren't hearing any sound, is that correct, for the whole video?
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't know what's happening with that. All right, well, let me see if I can do this.
This floodplain is the area next to a river or creek that floods during a storm. It's made up of the floodway here and the floodway fringe here. All of these areas flood. This happens naturally. Here's how it works. When we have a lot of rain, creeks throughout the city, like Crabtree and Walnut, can rise quickly. Eventually, that water will over the streambank and fans out on the ground like this. The floodplain gives the rain a place to go when streams can't handle any more water. Floodplains also help reduce pollution. The plants and soil clean and store rainwater, and it's a good habitat for wildlife, too. Most importantly, floodplains lessen the impact of severe weather. Remember, stay alert and stay safe when it floods. That means don't drive through flooded roads. Turn around and go another way. Look for flashing signs when a road is flooded. And if you see a clogged storm drain, be sure to report it. It's also a really good idea to have flood insurance if you live near a floodway. This will help protect you and your property. To learn more, go to raleighnc.gov/stormwater. To report a clogged storm drain, call us at 919-996-6446.
Okay, thanks. That was just something that we put together to, to help with the public outreach aspect of this. And I'll touch on our public outreach further down during my presentation. And now just a quick, little more detail of an overview about the areas of a creek that can flood in the floodplain that we actually regulate in Raleigh. The innermost portion of the floodplain is called the floodway. And that's actually a, an area that the federal government actually. area that the federal government actually regulates, that there can't be any obstruction or fill in this area without major studies and stations and things like that to go through FEMA and also the city or regulatory process. I like to say it's kind of like their no-fly zone. Areas outside the floodway that encompass the rest of the floodplain are the floodway fringe and the future conditions floodplain. This is something that the city regulates today. With our U D O and the whole floodway, floodway fringe and future conditions is referred to as the floodplain. Some issues with the terminology that we'll touch on as well, like on the presentation. So this all started, this, this current effort started in October of twenty eighteen, right after a major event in North Carolina, the city council asked the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission to review the city's current floodplain area regulations and recommend possible changes that would improve protection for exist, future development for large. Specifically included in the direction is to consider prohibition on new development in the hundred-year floodplain. And so that was passed back in October twenty eighteen by a seven to one vote. And the Stormwater Management Commission looked at our current floodplain area regulations, which, as I stated earlier, no fill or obstruction are allowed in the floodway. Fifty percent of the floodway fringe can be filled or obstructed with a building or a new structure or something like that. Residential structures, finished floor must be two feet above the hundred years flood elevation, and that includes all your plumbing, mechanical and your electrical work, and that's more of a safety and just ensure building limit. And part of the fifty percent of the floodway fringe being filled or obstructed, parcels that were half an acre or less are recorded prior to May second, two thousand and six, are exempted from the fifty percent lot coverage under the current ordinance. And the fifty percent lot coverage requirement came into the current ordinance in May second of two thousand and six. So at the Stormwater Commission level, they formed a stakeholder group to take a look at all these issues and to take a look at possible changes to our floodplain. That group met over the spring and summer and they developed a list recommendation and passed those back to commission then discussed those and sent those recommendations eventually back to the county. Stakeholder group should be noted during their seven meetings. We try to get as, as a diverse membership as we could as far as with landowners and possible elements for people around the floodplain. So we had a commercial developer, development attorney, reps from environmental advocacy group, a engineer that does primarily in floodplain. We also had a development engineer in the group, residential property owner who lives in the floodplain currently, a real estate agent, rep from the Home Builder Association of Wake County, someone from North Carolina Emergency Management who is kind of over our flood program. We, we had expertise from the National Flood Insurance Program and someone from the Regional Association of Wake County Realtors. And lastly, we had someone from Wake County floodplain side, who they have a more, a more restricted floodplain ordinance in the city currently. Commission recommendations, the first thing they kind of talked through were, who would this apply to and how would that work? They decided to keep the half acre or less exemption that's in the current ordinance for lots that that would be exempt from any changes. So if you were a half acre or less, then you would be exempt from these changes. Existing development that is not subdivided or created by subdivision after the effective date of any potential ordinance would, would have an exemption. Parcels that meet one or both of the first two may be recombined and maintain that exemption. And note, parcels that have a figure less are recorded prior to May second, two thousand and six, are exempted from the existing lot coverage. And so that will, that'll remain the same. If they're exempted today, they'll be exempted moving forward with this ordinance. And it was key that they said they must maintain the similar variance procedures that are currently in U D O that are based on hard, that are based on hardship of the individual cases. So the commission's big recommendation was to restrict any new development in the, in the floodway fringe. This is basically that, that outer area, the floodplain, and it's exceeding the regulations on our floodway, exceeding those to the floodway. Essentially mean the placement of any new fill or any new structures in our floodplain on vacant lots would not be allowed. So with these restrictions currently in place, what are you allowed to do with that area? Now, the prohibited uses, and this is not the full list, this is just some highlights, would be no, no encroachments, including fill, new construction, structures, remained protected homes, no chemical storage, and no solid waste disposal or hazardous waste facilities. Loud uses would be any farming pasture, outdoor planted nurseries, wildlife sanctuaries, lawns, yards, gardens, parking areas, anything really at grade that you're not changing the grade of the floodplain, because that's kind of what the goal was to not do, not change that grade and, and, and keep the floodplain the way it is today and get, and get that water someplace kind of spread out. So this is a list from our G I S staff of the properties that would be impacted by, by this new provision on vacant lots, and it's broken down with the number of parcels impacted and the acreage impacted. Start off going from left to right, properties entirely in the floodway and floodway fringe. So they're fully taken up. That's forty-four properties that are completely taken up by the floodway and floodway fringe and are vacant and about a hundred ninety-eight acres. Properties that are between seventy-five percent and a hundred percent taken up by the floodplain, it's about seventy-seven properties and about five hundred and twenty-nine acres. And then the properties between fifty percent and seventy-five, five percent taken up by the floodplain, it's eighty-three properties and three hundred and thirty-four acres. And then properties between one percent and fifty percent taken up is, is the vast majority, two hundred and forty-two and five hundred and eighty-eight acres. That is, as far as if you add all that up, it, it gets, it gets to be around sixteen hundred acres and change. And that represents a little more than one percent of the land area in, in the entire city's E T J. Other recommendations that the commission had for the city council was to maintain dry access to new public roads during any hundred-year storm event. Currently, you can overtop a roadway with about a foot of water, and so they wanted to say any new roads that are permitted would have dry access. And would overtop it all to make some U D O provisions to transfer density on, on the same lot where a portion of the lot has floodplain area on it. The density transfer is currently available in the current U D O, so there's not any additional language in this text change and to maintain all current branch procedures for hardship cases. Additional potential actions where they recommended city council that they have more funding available for a volunteer hazard mitigation buyout program. That would be to look at purchasing properties that are in, are impacted by this regulation. Currently, our buyout program is based on structures that are on, onsite in flood, and we usually work with FEMA in the state to get grant funding for that. This would be a little bit different because we'd be looking at properties that are vacant and haven't initially had any flood losses because there's no structures onsite, so this would be a change to that program. Incorporate language to the U D O to to allow a certain access to the National Flood Insurance Programs Cost Compliance Program, which that is included in the text change language, and to develop more floodplain communication and education moving forward. So, and the staff recommendations as part of this is something that the state emergency management has been asking us to do for a couple of years now was to restructure our floodplain chapter in, in the U D O to match the state model ordinance. This is contents, terminology, things like that, kind of to clean up, because we've had, we've had essentially the same structure for our floodplain ordinance since nineteen seventy-eight. Since nineteen seventy-eight, there's been a lot of language added and taken away, as I like to call it. It's been Frankensteined a bit, so this would be cleaning up that language and making it more readable. Benefits to this would be for the user can actually read it and follow it better than our current ordinance and also the majority of municipalities around us are using the same state model and its format, so when you go from municipality to municipality, you can kind of see the same just requirements and where they're at, where they're located, and I'd have to hunt, hunt for them finding that. So the, so the city council authorized this text change process to start in September of twenty twenty. And so as part of this terminology that we were talking about, something that we touched on at the, at this third slide was creating a special flood hazard area. That would encompass all of, all of the floodplains in Raleigh in, into one terminology, so. Three different types of floodplains, what we have in Raleigh are FEMA-based floodplains, drainage basin studies, which are done by, by the city in-house to figure out flooding on smaller streams and FEMA covers, and also flood hazard soils, which is something that.
Is there a way to, sorry to interrupt, there's a gray box over top of the screen. Is there a way to move that underneath the standard?
Oh, is this it? Yeah. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. I didn't realize you guys were seeing that, too. I thought I was just the one that had to move it around. Anyway, the flood hazard soils is in area floodplain that that we currently enforce. It's areas in low-lying stream beds and things like that that carry the same standards of, of our floodplain represented. So these zones that are in these three types are broken down into either future conditions, which is not the five hundred-year storm, the floodway fringe and the floodway. And, and as shown here, the floodway we would associate with floodway standards and the floodway fringe and the future conditions floodplain area have the same standards, which that's been consistent since two thousand and six. So the effects of the proposed changes, and this is kind of just going through different cases and development options, kind of going down, is if you're a lot that's less than half an acre, that was recorded prior to May second, two thousand and six, you're exempt from the fifty percent fill restriction currently, and, and if this text change were to get approved, there would be no change to that. Lots that are less than half an acre that are recorded on or after May second, two thousand and six, but before this effective date would be subject to the fifty percent fill, fill restriction in the fringe and future floodplain, and there would be no change from that if this text change were approved as written. Lots that are greater than half an acre with existing development are currently subject to the fifty percent fill restriction for the fringe and the future floodplain. After this text change, there would really be no change to that. And then recombination of any of the exempted lots that were mentioned above are subject to the fifty percent fill restriction in the fringe, the future floodplain, and after this text change, there'd be no change. Here's where we get more to the meat of it. For vacant lots greater than half an acre, currently they are subject to the fifty percent fill, fill restriction in the fringe and future floodplain. If this regulation were to, change were to pass, no fill or obstruction would, would be allowed in the entire special flood hazard area on that lot. Subdivision of developed lots, currently right now, they are subject to fill restriction in the fringe and the future floodplain. If this passes the way it's written, no fill or structures would be allowed in the entire special flood hazard area on that. And then for the subdivision of vacant lots, currently they're subject to the fifty percent fill restriction in fringe and future floodplain. If this were to pass and no fill or structures would be allowed in the entire special flood hazard area on that lot. So just to go through some of our outreach that we've done since the, the council authorized in September, we've created a dedicated webpage for the info with the text change, kind of where we are in the process, all, all of, all of our meeting minutes and that sort of thing. We've sent direct mailings out in November of twenty twenty, four hundred and forty-six physical mailings to the vacant lot owners plane, and we sent it another five thousand three hundred and thirty-nine mailers to all, to all of the lot owners that were in the floodplain. And this includes emails where we had available emails, and the physical mailings and the emails were mainly to let them know what was going on with the regulation change and also to alert them to a virtual town hall that we held on December eighth of twenty twenty. The recording of that is on our webpage as well, and we had about an hour and a half of presentation and then question and answer session from the residents that, the residents that attended. Since November, we've been regularly posting on our social media outlets, and we've been taking comments via a, via a web survey since December of twenty twenty, which closes at the end of this month. The public comment has been open via the text change portal or was open from December thirty-first through January fifteenth. And then we've had virtual meetings with smaller groups and individuals as if the rest of staff. And kind of like the video said, the benefits of updating these regulations was really to protect people and the environment, make these changes to keep the flooding near creeks from getting worse over time, leaving more room for the water spread out and stored in the floodplain. If there's less develop, development directly near streams, it equals less safety concerns. Area, and of course, from a water quality standpoint, natural floodplain is a healthier floodplain. Everyone's sake, here's a link to the floodplain text change. One more section that kind of links back to kind of the exchange and where is the planning commission and all that.
Hey, Mr. Bronken, that link that you just provided, can you pull that up as we talk about these text changes? So when we open up the public comment, we'll have some, some reference to look at.
And also, could you send us that, that presentation? I've been taking pictures so I could reference different slides, but.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I wanted to see that, that matrix while we're having this discussion, so if we could either put that back up first so I can take a screenshot, or if we could, that'd be helpful.
This matrix, sorry. Sorry, computer's acting a little slow. There, this matrix.
Yes, sir.
That one right there, yeah. Hey, Ben, can you get rid of that little gray box on the bottom side? Sorry.
This box is my nemesis.
Perfect. Wait, I didn't catch it. Hold on, sorry. I don't know why mine didn't print screen.
And what I'll do is I'll send the presentation out to Keegan right now, and he can send it out to you guys.
Perfect. Okay, I got it. Thanks, Ben.
Hey, Keegan, while we, wait, I, I got one comment from the public. It was a, I got many, but there was one comment that I got from Mrs. Isabel Maddox regarding this case, and she said that she had to leave this conversation about four fifty-five, so I just wanted to make sure I, we could get her a chance to speak before she had to leave. So if Mrs. Maddox wanted to speak, I'll open the floor to her now while we're waiting on this to bring it back to the table.
I can go ahead and unmute Ms. Maddox now.
Okay.
Hello, good afternoon. I am prepared to speak now, but I will tell you, I have resolved my conflict, so if it works better for me to speak later, I can hold off.
Okay, okay, thanks. I just wanted to give you that, just I didn't see that you had changed.
I appreciate it. I did send out an email saying I'd resolved it, so I'll, I'll go in normal order, and I appreciate your, your special accommodation.
Okay, we'll wait for you towards the end. Thank you, Ms. Maddox.
Yeah, um. Commissioner man?
Yes, yes, sir.
Get out of the sharing because that's kind of messed my computer up to email.
Okay.
And so, um, after I email it, I will, will continue to share the presentation.
Okay, so you're going to share the presentat-, you're going to email the presentation and then you're going to share the screen of the tech change. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Because, yeah, my computer is fighting me. I need to do both at the same time.
Okay, okay. Well, Mr. McDonald, as we wait, do we have any more, uh? Comments or people to sign up from the public to speak?
Yes, we do have a few other people who signed up to speak. I'm happy to work through that list if you'd like me to.
Uh, give me one second. Mr. Brown, how, how are you looking on your end?
The video was too big to send, so I had to take that out of the presentation.
Okay, because I'm. Should we open it up to the public while we wait or?
Yes, sure.
Okay, okay, okay. Mr. McDonald, we're, we're ready to open it up.
Okay, um, I will just work through the list that I have here.
Okay.
So the first person I have listed is Suzanne Harris.
Okay.
Unmute Suzanne now.
Okay, Ms. Harris.
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I, I know, um, I have been experiencing some choppy, uh, audio, so hopefully I will come across clear. For all of you. Um, thank you, uh, first and foremost for the opportunity to, to speak this afternoon. Um, I would like to, um. Give some kudos to the city of Raleigh, to both Ben Brown and Wayne Miles. Uh, as was mentioned, I did participate. Um, in the stakeholder group that met, uh, what eighteen or so months ago. Um, over the spring and summer of. Twenty nineteen, I guess it was. I'm losing track of, of years now, but, um. But that effort was, was well put together. The group of us that met, I thought was a, a good representation, um, across various interest groups. Um, and I thought that the staff did a good job of, of walking us through, um, the various, uh, aspects that the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee. Want us, wanted us to consider. Of course, this is just one small piece of that work. Um, and of course, the devil is always in the details. So, um, this is the, um. One piece that has been brought forward in a text change and as that language has been put onto paper. And everyone has had the opportunity to take a look at it. Of course, that is where, um, I think. Questions and concerns from folks in our industry have arisen. I think the other challenge that unfortunately we've experienced is just the timing of it, you know, coming right at the holiday time when it came out for. Public comment. I, I feel like was a bit of a challenge on my end, getting my members to engage. Right across the holiday time to try and get some input from them. Um, but. In the meantime, we have been able to have some conversations with the city of Raleigh staff to better understand. Uh, what's being proposed in the ordinance, or excuse me, in the text change. Um, as far as my comments are concerned, um, on the specific wording and, and what you're looking at today. I'll try to make them somewhat brief, but, uh, capturing, uh, the majority of what, what we have issues over. I'd say first and foremost, it's, it's a factor of confusion. Um, I was pleased to see Ben in his presentation to you all, um, added some additional insight into the definitions of floodway. Fringe, um, because the flood plain is encapsulating both the floodway and the floodway fringe. And I believe there's been quite a bit of confusion over what. Is included in the fringe and, um, you're not just talking about the hundred year flood plain. Which is what was part of the council direction in that quotation that was included. In one of the initial slides that Ben had there. The, the direction from council was to consider a prohibition on new development in the one hundred year flood plain. Um, so you know, other people think of that as the hundred year floodway fringe, not. Adding on the future conditions. I do recognize that the city of Raleigh has been enforcing that, um, for quite some time, but it also includes, uh, flood prone soils. Um, the other aspect of that is the five hundred year flood plain, um, on the maps. It gets confusing to understand what delineation you're looking at, whether it's five hundred year flood plain. Or the future can, the one hundred year future conditions flood plain. So that actually has been quite a point of confusion as people are reading this text change. And looking at property that they own and perhaps have plans to develop. And there's a lot of concern that the regulation is reaching out into the five hundred year flood plain. Um, and I'm hoping that maybe Ben, uh, can provide some insight into that. Uh, and help out, uh, those folks to better understand what those regulations are going to be doing in that area. Um, we, I had conveyed concerns during the stakeholder meetings about. What would happen to those properties that were either completely or extremely, um, impacted. By the changes that were being proposed of not allowing the fifty percent fill. Uh, so you know, you have landowners who have pieces of property that have an expectation, uh, currently as to what they could do with that. And of course, this would take away their ability to develop that, um. As today's standards would allow, and in some cases it might take away their ability to develop it at all. So I would like to know, um, how the city plans to handle that. Um, is it just going to be? Simply a taking or they're going to have to go through the tedious variance process. Um, and spend the extra money themselves to argue their ability to develop that land, um, so that it's not a complete. Loss to them, uh, whether or not there are buyout options as well. Uh, we did talk about, um, the possibility, and I believe Ben could probably speak a little bit more to this. To explain it more to you, but the idea of transferring density. So that if part of your property currently could be developed and under this ordinance, it would no longer be allowed to be developed. That, that density could be transferred to other portions of your property. The flood hazard soils, um, that layer, um, of the GIS is not very accurate and the city of Raleigh. Puts the onus on the owner to prove that that line that is on the map is correct. So if the owner has, um. The understanding that that line is incorrect, the onus is on them to prove otherwise and. Quite frankly, if they are able to prove that the city of Raleigh, uh, is incorrect. Um, we believe that the city of Raleigh should reimburse them for that expense. And, um, I think the other large issue that we have is knowing the, the owner of the property needs a way. To readily know how this regulation is going to affect their property. So by that I mean, they need the ability to go. On the city of Raleigh website and readily overlay GIS onto their property to see how. The flood plain ordinance will affect their property. Unfortunately, that's not able to be done in totality today. They can overlay FEMA maps. They can overlay the inaccurate flood prone soils maps, if I'm understanding this all correctly. However. They cannot overlay the drainage basin map, which is unavailable in a GIS layer. Um, and so this makes it rather problematic for them to know upfront if what they're going to purchase. Or look to develop is actually developable in the way that they think it may be. Um, until they get unfortunately too far down the line and have put out quite an expense. Only to find out from Stormwater that they in fact have a regulation on that property. That they were unaware of. So those are some of my initial comments. Um, I think there's. Uh, a lot of work to be done in this tech change, quite frankly, before it moves forward. Um, so I'm not sure how exactly you all plan to go through the document. Um, but I would like to offer the Home Builders Association as a resource and we are all in to help out however, however we can. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Harris. Can you, uh, step online? Because I want to bring Mr. Brown back. To talk about a few of these, uh, a few of your comments. And I think.
Sure.
I, I was taking also one comment that you made was, uh, there was some confusion with the maps regarding floodways, flood plains and, and the flood fringe, the floodway fringe. Uh, the second thing that I got was, uh, transferring densities, uh, as far as a buyout. Um, so I wanted to talk to that point. And then the third point, uh, I want to talk to about was, um. Property owners being able to go onto city website using GIS to be able to overlay their property with, uh. City properties to, to be able to make sure that, uh. Their property lies, uh, within relationships to the flood plain. So I think, um, those are. Miss me, let me know if I missed anything, but I just wanted to talk about those points, uh, with Mr. Brown as we bring him back.
Yeah, I think you captured the majority there. Thank you.
Okay, okay, Mr. Brown, are you, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Mr. Brown, can you bring up the map, um, that you, that you showed during your presentation?
Keegan, you, you might want to just mute me until they want to ask me a question, just in case I have two dogs and they, they've been known to start barking, so.
Okay, are you seeing the PowerPoint now?
Yes, sir.
So I believe. This is the area. Is this, uh, the map?
No, there was a map, uh, like a city map, a citywide map that just shows, uh, floodways, flood plains. Um, I think. That's it there.
There was this snippet here, yeah. Yeah, so this is, uh, actually.
Well, let me ask Ms. Harris, is this the map that you were referring to? This, this having some confusion? Can you, can you unmute Ms. Harris if she's muted?
There we go. Thank you. I was waiting for him. Thanks. Um. Yeah, well, in this map, this is a, this is a good example. So the blue, and please Ben, correct me if I say this wrong. The blue is the floodway. The pink represents the, uh, FEMA. One hundred year, um, floodway fringe as well as the hundred year future conditions. Or maybe that's the purple. Is that the purple, Ben?
Actually, the, uh, pink, um, represents the. Floodway fringe area and the future conditions. The purple area here, but like, here is where some of the confusion is lying and it's happened. Two thousand and six and like me and Suzanne had talked about like. Uh, when, when these maps first went effective is that the entire city right now is not mapped for future conditions for the FEMA flood plain. Um, with the maps that are currently out for, we still don't have a, a go live data on. Uh, the entire city will be mapped for future conditions floods in the FEMA areas. And what they did in two thousand and six is this purple area here, that's, that's, uh, considered five hundred year flood plain. In areas where it was future conditions flood plain, they left the color. The same as the five hundred year flood plain, but it is different and it is a different area that we enforce. So area that we enforce, not the five hundred year flood plain, which is. But an area is a city where we do have a future condition flood plain, which currently is about twenty percent of the city. We do enforce to the floodway fringe standards and the future condition standards the same.
Ben, I'm sorry, you, you went in and out a couple of times. What was it you said was twenty percent?
Uh, about twenty percent of the city is mapped for future conditions flood plain.
So in the area of this, in the eighty percent of the city that is not. Mapped currently for future conditions, one hundred year future conditions floodway. Or fringe, excuse me. What does the city enforce there? Just? Just the floodway and the hundred year fringe and the flood prone soils?
Correct.
So not the five hundred at all?
Correct. We do not, uh, do the five hundred year at all.
So in the twenty percent that is currently mapped with future conditions, you impose those as well with the same regulations that. You have for the one hundred year flood plain.
That was part, that was FEMA back in two thousand and six when they had that additional. Forty percent of the city is that we had to enforce that the same as the floodway.
Okay, and the flood prone soils. Do they at all come outside of the reaches? Of the floodway or fringe? Are there ever areas of the city where the flood prone soils? Kind of escape those immediate boundaries that you have already regulations on top of?
So where flood prone soils come into play is, is that are outside of the FEMA layer. So. Essentially, the FEMA floodplain maps handle streams and creeks for one square mile in drainage area. Or more. And so everything outside of that is kind of handled by the flood prone soils. Now, you could perform a detailed flood study on a flood prone soil area. And you would designate an area of that floodway and floodway fringe. So that's where. Some of the terminology will overlap and, and the new ordinance change kind of seek to clarify that. Because that's currently how it's enforced today. And with the new status proposed as far as two thousand and sixteen.
Mr. Brown, you've been going in and out just a little bit. It sounds like this might be an area of confusion for, for several folks and it is a bit for me as well. Is there any way that we could create some kind of a, um. One pager graphic, something that, that could help explain the answers to some of these questions?
Yeah, we can definitely work on that.
That'd be great.
Thanks. Uh, I see your hand, Commissioner. I, I want to add something real quick and I will bring it to you. Mr. Brown, um, Ms. Harris talked about transferring density, uh, in flood plains and floodways. Um, have, has there any been talks about that, um? With you or the city about, um, that process or how that will look?
Yes, so. Density is currently allowed under existing UDO. What Suzanne and I had discussed last week was different standards within that area might need to be more flexible. N C transfer is kind of written there that it'll take your whole property area into account, not just the buildable area. Uh, calculate your density, but there were certain standards like setbacks and things like that. That we may need to look at being a little more flexible on in these floodplain areas. And, and Suzanne can correct me if I'm misrepresenting anything that we talked about last week.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Brown. Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, I agree with, um, Commissioner Miller. Well, I mean, I think a, a one page graphic. Be helpful, but I just have a couple of questions, Ben, to make sure I think I understand. So, um, the five hundred year storm is not considered, which is, is the purple unless there's an overlap of floodprone, prone soils. The pink, which is the, the hundred year fringe, uh, was remapped. Back in two thousand and sixteen, but only twenty percent of that remapping is showing up on our GIS. Um, and then thirdly, the, the. Text change is going to take into account flood prone soils, which again, they could overlap outside of the pink fringe. But there's no current, uh, mapping or graphics that are available to property owners to understand. I mean, that, that seems. Um, like we've got a little bit of the cart before the horse. If you ask me, if we don't even, if we've only mapped twenty percent of. Future conditions, but do, did I? Did I butcher that worse or did I, did I simplify it all for myself?
Uh, so for the future conditions, that is currently, we just have future conditions. Uh, so for the future conditions, that is currently, we just have future conditions set up in the in twenty percent of the FEMA mapped areas, which I said are those larger creeks and streams. And in 2006, which is the last time we had a map update, they they uh they went through and studied uh twenty percent of the city's FEMA floodplain for future conditions, which is essentially when they did the mathematical model for it, they um based the the uh the 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 city's growth growth on zoning and not just what was on the ground today. So that's what the future condition represents. Now, the alluvial soils are only in areas that are outside of the FEMA floodplain. And the alluvial soil, excuse me, soils, and that's something that we've been uh enforcing in Raleigh since nineteen seventy-eight as far as areas that are outside the FEMA floodplain that we've been uh enforcing those, just like the FEMA floodplain. And in 2006, when we changed to the fifty percent fill standard, we made that consistent that we were enforcing the flood prone soils the same as we were FEMA floodplain. So it you will run into the flood prone soils in areas where you're outside of FEMA floodplain. So you shouldn't land flood prone soils driving regulations on the same site, if that makes sense.
It it does. It does. I understand we've been enforcing, but I guess to Ms. Harris's question, as a property owner, the only way for me to figure that out is to do a test or to submit for entitlements and be told by the city that we're now in that. I mean, how how's a property, if I'm performing due diligence for an owner, how am I going to inform them that they they have flood prone soils outside of that pink line that they they need to be concerned about?
I mean, as part of that um process, you would have to work through city staff. And I mean, that's kind of been insisted. I mean, it's not ideal and there is a GIS layer for it, like you said, but it's not as accurate as as of the FEMA layer.
Okay, I think I got it. I think I think a graph.
But we still are enforcing the flood prone soils today. I mean, that's just, I mean, I'm not saying that makes it right, but I just want everybody to know kind of where we are.
Yeah, no, I I get it. Since nineteen seventy-eight, I just, I I think that I think that a graphic would be helpful and I do see some concern with property owners understanding that as they're contemplating development or purchase or entitlements of a certain area. And I I totally get the concern that Ms. Harris raised.
Thanks, Mr. Brown. Uh, Mr. Brown, can you bring up that link? Is that working now? And then while we went on, like Keegan, we'll open the floor for the next uh for our next comment from the public.
Okay, um, I'll move to Isabel Maddox next.
Okay.
Unmuting now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I'm Isabel Maddox, P O Box nine four six Raleigh two seven six oh two. Um, I'm here today on behalf of several different property owners, which have properties, they're either developing or they own in flood, in areas where which have been mapped to show some degree of floodplain or future conditions. Um, first of all, I think as a just a uh initial issue, this is this is an unfair text change because it it basically imposes the entire burden of dealing with the city's flooding problem on a very small number of properties. Ben had a graph graphic that showed, I think, sixteen hundred acres and I don't know how many properties it was, maybe thousand, twelve hundred properties. Um, and this this property, this um problem that we have is a citywide property, whether it's caused by, you know, climate change, overdevelopment, or just mother nature. It's a pro- a a problem that we all share, yet you're asking to have a very small number of property owners bear the entire burden. And some of those are going to be told that property that, you know, fourteen years ago, they thought was fully developable isn't, and now they've been thinking fifty percent, now they're going to go to zero percent. And this it's a it's an asset, and so a lot of asset value goes away. It's sort of like, you know, one day you have a hundred thousand dollars in your retirement account and somebody comes in and reaches in and grabs half that money out or maybe all of that money out. How would you feel? You would feel like you've really been ripped off. And that's how some of these property owners feel, like they've been really ripped off because they can't do anything. And so what what they previously considered an asset with value has no value. It seems more appropriate to me that this burden should be shared by all the properties across the city. That the properties having some floodplain should not subsidize all the rest of the properties in Raleigh. And the city could take the leadership on that by imposing some sort of a tax on all properties and then using those funds to buy out some of those properties if it was determined that it really is in the best interest of the city to not develop or grade those properties. So I believe that that's sort of a first point. To uh, I appreciated Mrs. Harris's comments. They were very good comments, but there were a couple of things that I wanted to touch on. One, the density transfer. The general concept of density transfer works in in an R zoning category. Like if you're zoned R four, you can move that density, that that works. But in mixed use uh context, it really doesn't work because because your density is really governed by the amount of height you can get and the amount of footprint that you can use. So DC transfer is not really very meaningful for any mixed use zone properties in the city. Um, finally, to to discuss the point of this confusion about, you know, uh, the flood hazard areas and the future conditions. You know, we've had real confusion on zoning case I've been working on, where the city council member asked for a condition uh precluding any development in the floodplain consistent with this text change. And I looked at the text change and I look at, well, gosh, it considers uh includes the future flood conditions. And I went to GIS and that's that specifically calls out, you know, the point two percent or one percent future conditions areas, which are shown in purple. But then in conversations with staff, they say, oh, no, that's not really it. And so what is it? And I think that's the question that we're all asking. What is what is restricted other than the blue and the pink? Is there some way to to determine that that you can do um on an objective basis? If you're doing research about what you, you know, what your entitlement can be on a particular property, that needs to be cleared up because it's it's just clear as mud right now. Um, so I think um the other thing I wanted to talk about is the effective date. I think this seems like it's poised to get approved. And if it does get approved, it seems like we should put the effective date out there a little bit to give. You know, one, I think it'd be nice to have the new FEMA maps adopted. I know they're not even that new, but they should be adopted first. And two, to give uh property owners who may have been spending money on on uh development plans to to complete those. They don't waste their uh time and money they've spent on developing plans for a particular property. Um, and finally, are there going to be corresponding changes to other city regulations involving things like cross-access stub streets, build-to requirements, greenway requirements, right-of-way improvements that um, you know, a property owner would would not be required to comply with if they their properties in the floodplain. And and even though that seems obvious, until the until those cha- corresponding changes are made, those property owners are in a sort of a no man's land where they may have to seek variances because they can't actually do it. So I think the city needs to be mindful of those impacts. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Maddox. Um, Keegan, do we have any more speakers ready to present?
Yes, we do have, I believe, two more. Um, the next person I have on the list is
Okay.
I'm going to unmute you now.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, Freeman, Withers Web and L, one thirty-seven South Wilmington Street, Suite one uh two hundred, two seven six oh one. Uh, I I just echo a lot of the previous two commenters' thoughts, specifically Ms. Harrison in the thought that that I'd like to see this, the wording of this ordinance be improved for additional clarity and uh and confidence as a as a stormwater engineer and a frequent uh permit applicant. Uh, it is is very reassuring to know that we have a a good understanding of what the rule is and how we can comply with that before we get to a submittal. Uh, it makes our job uh more efficient. It makes the reviewer's job more efficient when we can all know where the bars are that we need to comply with. Uh, so with that being said, uh, and without trying to repeat too many of the previous comments, uh, I did have two specific uh pieces of the ordinance that I would like to get some clarity on because I've heard uh on the first one, some different uh information in various presentations or various guidance from the staff. Uh, and that is for lots greater than a half an acre that have existing development. Is the entire lot exempt from this ordinance or only the portion the portion of the uh flood hazard area that that contains the existing development? In other words, if there's if there's development up upland on the lot and flood area on the, you know, in the lower areas, it's that's not cleared or not developed, does that does that lot become exempt uh and not subject to the rule or is it only the footprint of existing development? And the second question is, uh, I believe there's still a provision in the uh new ordinance where if a no-rise certification, which is a flood model, uh, that documents that that the proposed impacts would not cause a rise in the flood elevation, uh, that a no-rise can be used to to remove any prohibition from structures or development in the floodway fringe. Uh, if that if that model justifies that request. And I and I want to get some clarification on if that is my if my understanding is correct or if uh if if not, I believe the language, you know, would need to be clarified either way. So I'll I'll try to keep it short and just uh look forward to that discussion and and happy to help however I can to to clarify this language before it gets uh to the adoption stage.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, can you bring up that that table that that we had up earlier to answer the first question? Um, and then also, can you can you keep can you keep the caller online to uh keep him on the minute so we can have a dialogue about? No, not that one. It was the uh, it was, you keep scrolling down, that that graphic.
So it's the the third line is the one I was referencing.
So so the ordinance is currently written to um to uh follow that any lot that's greater than have have an acre with existing development, they would only be subject to the fifty percent rule that's currently in place.
Okay, so that is that is existing anywhere on that lot, not necessarily in the flood fringe.
Correct, but any further subdivision of that lot, then you'd lose that.
Sure, sure. Okay, no, I just want to make, I I thought I had heard previous presentations during the public outreach that it was only the the footprint of development inside the floodway fringe that would be exempt, not the entire lot. So thank you for clarifying that.
Now, then to answer Mr. Freeman's question about the no-rise study, it would be just like um development in the floodway is a no-rise would be an adequate way to to develop those areas as as uh it is in the floodway today.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Keegan, can you uh let the last speaker present if they're ready?
Yes, uh, so the last speaker I believe we have is um Ed Moore. Ed, I'm going to unmute you now.
Yes. This is Ed Moore. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I appreciate your allowing me to uh to be part of your presentation and uh and your meeting. Uh, I'm Ed Moore. I live at three six two two Belby Road in Raleigh and I own property that has partial flood fringe on it. It's located at one fourteen West Jury Lane and it's point six seven acres of undeveloped residential lot. I bought this lot about twenty years ago to build a home after I retired and I have now retired and uh have been sketching some plans to go on that property. But TC sixteen twenty will have a great impact on my plans to be able to develop my home. Um, so I'm strongly opposed to the wording in TC sixteen twenty, specifically section nine three seven A one A, which is the exemption for small undeveloped lots. And that's the one that Mr. Brown had on the the chart there that showed uh any lot of one half acre or less in size. My lot happens to be just slightly above that one half acre. Uh, but as uh was pointed out by a previous speaker, Ms. Maddox, it did will have a great uh impact on the asset value of my property. I did some research on a lot of the properties that were in the flood fringe area and most of those lots are above one half acre. And so it's going to affect a lot of of lots that are above one half acre, but there's only a few of those lots in the uh in the floodway fringe area in residential zoning. Um, and then the other section is nine three seven A one B, which is an exemption for the developed lots. And that's the one that the previous speaker was just addressing. And um I think it's very unfair to discriminate against someone like me who has just a slightly above a half acre lot to say that I cannot do anything. But if I had built on the lot in the past, then I would be able to go in and make changes to that because I would be exempt. So I have a great uh problem with just that one word of one half acre. And my recommendation is that that be changed to any lot in a previously approved subdivision. And like I said, I've owned this property for about twenty years and had plans to develop it and put my own home on it. And now the city is making change very subtly as a text change and jerking the rug out from under what plans that I had. So it's not just me, but there are some other folks that fall in this same category. So I think that the one half acre is very discriminatory. Uh, it does not have a great deal of basis. It could have been point seven acres and I would have fit within it. It could have been one acre. So there uh, there is really not a strong justification for having it at one half acre to be exempt. So please consider that in your thoughts on this process and your potential rewrites. And I agree with what Ms. Harris said and the uh Ms. Maddox and the previous speakers as to the great concern for the value of these properties and specifically my property that uh is greatly impacted. So thank you very much for that uh opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, can you speak uh to the commenters, uh, to the gentleman's comments about vacant lots greater than half an acre and to while uh some thinking about behind that threshold of the half acre?
Uh, yeah, and um the threshold based on the consistency with the two thousand and six exchange that kind of made that half acre exemption as well. So that's so that's kind of was using that as a precedence moving forward to kind of keep that consistent.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner.
Yeah, sorry, Ben. Well, you kind of cut out there for a second. Was that was adopted in two thousand and six that would follow on the half acre?
Uh, in two thousand and six, when we did the fifty percent um restriction on the floodway fringe, it was deemed that lots half an acre or less would be exempt from that. And so the stakeholder group and the stormwater commission and then the city council kind of kept that half acre consistent with what was already on the uh book for the exemption.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, can you, that link, is that still not working?
No, it's working. Um, it's basically just an info website and I'll share.
I'm sorry, I was looking for uh the text changes, the the actual text and and then amendments to the text.
Oh, no, that so um I assume you all got a copy of that, your agenda.
Yeah.
But maybe I'm wrong in that assumption.
No, 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 we got, I just wanted to show it for so that the public could see it. And so when we talked about it, we could we could have something to look at as we talked.
Yeah, and you can um go to it from this website here as far as the current regulations. And then it's got the proposed um link to it through the planning website, I believe, here.
Commissioner, I saw your hand down. I saw your hand. Commissioner Miller, I'll get to you in a second.
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of the questions before we start to go through the texts to follow up on some of the comments. They're not in any particular order. They're not in any particular order. Um, I, Ms. Max's comment about the effective date, can, can somebody confirm what that is? I'm looking through the text, but is that 30 days after adoption? Do I understand that correctly?
That was what the staff had proposed, but that's open to discussion by the planning commission.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Um, I, I, I do have a question, I guess, Ben, to follow up. I mean, that half acre, I understand, was a carryover. I guess, I guess maybe it's a, maybe this can be a, a, a two-pronged question. I am curious how we can, you know, if, if there was any other discussion other than the fact that it was already in there. And so let's just carry it over. That may or may not be a good reason. I'm not sure. But then along those lines, I mean, aren't there, uh, a number of other municipalities in North Carolina that have already adopted similar policies? And are considering them. And I'm curious how some of our restrictions compare to those. But maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong on that.
No, so there are, um, many of the, um, other across the state have more restrictive floodplain ordinance than, uh, than the city does. And in fact, in Wake County, um, the majority of the, uh, 11 towns in Wake County itself are stricter than we are as well. Um, I know in like Charlotte, which is probably the, the, uh, the most urban, but in a lot more urban than Raleigh is, they have, uh, restrictions based around their, um, uh, created their own kind of floodplain maps and made their floodway like a lot wider than what FEMA uh, just required. Their way like a lot wider. That's kind of how they did it. So.
And they're not allowing development within that extended flood when they develop.
Correct. Sorry.
Gotcha. And then I guess, I guess my last, I, I mean, maybe as we talk about, I mean, I, I feel certain we're going to hear this again, maybe not. I know, um, Ms. Miller's asked for additional graphic. I would like some additional information on those municipalities, Harrison standpoint. Think it'd be helpful for the public as well.
That's no problem.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think the last one that again, this sort of maybe links. Um, I, I completely understand property owners' concerns um, about changing regulations. And we've mentioned the buyout program. And I think you said that the, um, the task force back in two thousand and whatever the date was, I can't find it in my notes now. Um, that was one of their comments to, to increase or to make that buyout program robust. And so I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. I think that's important. Um, but I, I think that linked to, um, Ms. Max's comment too. I mean, you know, these areas are flooding, there's insurance costs. I mean, there, there's, there, there are all sorts of implications cost wise about flooding areas, insurance, rebuilding, buyout programs. And so these all have huge impacts on not just property owners, but, uh, others in the community. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know how much we can dive into that as part of these discussions, but I, 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 I would like to hear a little bit more about, again, maybe what other municipalities are doing or, or some information that we have to understand that because those two things seem pretty intertwined to me. And I don't have enough, it's not my business. I don't have enough, um, information to really understand the impacts of that. So those are my comments.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Miller, you're muted.
Thanks. Um, thanks to everyone who has worked on this and to the callers as well, especially those that have worked with several folks to collect comments. Um, just sort of taking a step back and the bigger picture, when I was looking at this, reading the reports. Um, just generally when we're going to create new regulations, one of the questions I like to ask is what is the problem they're trying to solve? And then trying to quantify how this solves that problem. Um, I saw the final slide talked about some of the benefits generally, like the categories of benefits. Um, but have we done any specific evaluation on quantifying the benefits of doing this? And then also I saw that, you know, this would be limiting development in 1.6% of the city of Raleigh. Have we quantified the cost to the private sector of doing this as well?
So for the first piece, as far as the quantifying, like, um, were you thinking in like a cost there as well?
Uh, perhaps. I mean, obviously there, when it comes to regulations, certainly environmental ones, we could do lots of regulations that gen, that do general good, but trying to really quantify what type of good it would do, right? So I know that this came about in 2018 after Hurricane Florence and, um, so, and they want better flutter, better floodplain regulations presumably to solve a specific harm related to a storm like Hurricane Florence. Um, well, so first of all, just defining the, the problem that we're trying to solve. Are we trying to fix what happened there? You know, we're just, I'm, I'm just sort of trying to figure out specifically how to evaluate the trade offs that we're trying to evaluate here. So what is the problem and, and does this do that? And how does it do that? And what does it cost basically?
As I say with most thing, like most things, stormwater, it's tough to fix what we've already done. But, um, I, it was more about not letting it get worse. And so that's why the, uh, recommendations from stakeholder and, and then, uh, to the commission or the storm work commission, excuse me, was, um, more about putting new structures and that sort of thing. So they didn't want to have any new structures that act as blockages to the floodplain and then also create a, a, um, issue where you'd have more people closer to the floodplain and that could be a potential safety issue during these storms.
Um, so have we looked at what the impact of this, these regulations would be specifically on, let me try to pull up that final slide? Um, flooding near creeks getting worse over time? How would it impact in a quantifiable way, the, the flooding near the creeks over time?
Okay. So like, so I mean, the more you develop the floodplain, the worse that flood is going to get. So like, were you looking for like the, like a number or like an elevation? Cause that's going to be a kind of a tough.
Yes, just generally some, some way to demonstrate the quantifiable benefits of doing this. I, I, I don't doubt that they exist, but, um, I could probably brainstorm some of the metrics that I would use to try to identify the benefits of this. But, um, would begin to become a stormwater expert in this in what the metrics typically are, are that sort of evaluate how we're doing with respect to flooding as a city.
Okay. Well, they, I mean, they, I mean, the benefits are going to be a little hard to quantify because we picked the hundred year storm, but on occasion we get more than a hundred year storm and less than a hundred year storm. But I mean, the more you kind of use up your floodplain and make it develop land with like fill and blockages and that sort of thing. That's where you're going to lose that capacity and that capacity is going to cause flooding upstream and then more, more flooding downstream as well.
Right. So how did we typically quantify the type of how much damage a flood causes?
Um, I know the state of North Carolina has done a, um, nation on their website. They have a flood risk identification website that kind of shows you with different storms, how much property damage that you would necessarily get with those storms with the existing buildings and things like that. But because we're talking about vacant lots, there's usually, um, the damage there is not to any structures. And that's what we're trying to kind of.
Gotcha. So maybe putting in those two categories, there's the damage to the structures that are in the floodplain that are themselves getting flooded that way. And then also the impact downstream. Are we looking at that as well?
Correct. I mean, because anytime you, um, develop your floodplain, you're going to back up water upstream and then you're going to cause water to move faster downstream, which is going to affect flooding downstream as well. Beyond the city limits even, and the same with the upstream.
Gotcha. Okay. So I was going to say with the first one, so the, I'm just trying to understand the problem that we're trying to solve. If people are developing on their own land and then their own development gets flooded, then we're just, then that presumably is, is causing damage caused that's covered by flood insurance if they should buy it and to the property owner if they don't. And if, if that's the problem that we're generally trying to solve, that, that makes sense to me. Or if it's more the impact on the rest of the city and downstream, that's also something else that I just wanted to better understand what we're trying to.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I'm not trying, and I would say it's both. I mean, if there's specific information that we bring back, I'm just, I just want to make sure I bring you the rest of it back. But, um, it would, the impact to whatever development is pulling that property. And then when you put that development, you're going to cause loss of of that development during a flood. And then also you're going to cause the creek levels to rise up and downstream because of that new development. So it's twofold.
Because of the impervious issues?
Uh, no, the actual, um, blocking of the floodplain area, not just the impervious.
The blocking.
If you put like a, think of like a building or fill is like a, as just like a big block and you're blocking that portion of the floodplain off and you used to have that area that, uh, water could flow and kind of spread out there. And if it can't spread out there, it's, it's going to be
Enforced.
And then it's, it's going to move faster and become deeper and more channelized right there because you've kind of taken away its ability to spread out.
Okay. So, um,
So like Crabtree Creek is a pretty good example, not to go back to that thing. And I don't, there's anyone from Crabtree Creek on our call here. So maybe they won't get upset if we use them as an example. Um, going off this graphic here that I, that I think I'm still sharing, I hope, of Crabtree Creek, like Crabtree Creek, like right around Crabtree Valley Mall. Before the mall was there back in the seventies, you used to have room to kind of spread out and kind of, um, meander through here and, uh, cause less flooding up and downstream because the water had a place to go here. Well, now there's this huge three story block that essentially blocking the floodplain. That that water that used to spread out here is now being pushed upstream or pushed downstream at a higher rate. So it's costing impacts from there.
So the reason I wanted to clarify those questions is because if there's, um, if that's part of the issue, is there any type of economic benefit that can, that, that a property owner could have in that area? Um, like some kind of a surface parking area or something there, or some type of, um, semi-impervious surface or something that could, could address these issues and that both wouldn't be damaged for their own property during a storm and then also, um, might mitigate some effects downstream. I mean, how, did you ever consider some of those options as well?
Yeah. And, um, and I think when the, um, city back in two thousand and six, uh, and I'm not a, not a, I can't, uh, teleport in time to go back to two thousand and six to see exactly what this was done. But in two thousand, I think the city was kind of splitting it with the 50% um, area to kind of give, to kind of give more area back. But the floodplain property can be used as ground level uses and, and, and still be used for parking and things like that. It's putting that obstruction or that law, like I'm saying, and I hope that's not too confusing a term in the floodplain that we're, that the, that the group was trying to avoid.
So what could be, so that was another question that I had. So what could be built in these floodplains?
So in these vacant floodplains, you could do, um, uh, ground level uses as far as for like parking areas, play areas. Scores, you, you, you just couldn't change that natural ground.
Gotcha. I know that I was confused about that because we had some prior zoning cases that thought that that might be an exception to, to these new SMAT guidelines.
Yeah. And, um, this is, uh, basically the list we pulled out of the existing code that's allowed in the floodway currently. That's kind of where that comes from. So it was like, I wouldn't necessarily, it's an exemption. And I think it came with downtown south. There was talk about it when they were talking about what could be done and how, how detailed the condition had to be to, 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 uh, just reflect that. But really any ground level uses would be allowed.
Okay. Yeah. There's another zoning case as well that's before us, um, that's wrestling with that same question. So any, okay. Um, and then in terms of the volunteer hazard mitigation buyout program, have we projected what the private sector cost would be?
Um, what we've looked at for the, for the city council, and I can bring that back, was, um, the kind of tax impact that this would make. Um, where we don't have a good handle is that private sector, we can look at what the tax value is of this land, but it's undeveloped. So it's not as accurate as I'm sure some of the property owners would want it to be.
Mm-hmm.
Because it doesn't take into account, because there's not a good metric that, that like I can make for 198 acres that says this is, this is the development potential of 198 acres.
Mm-hmm.
Because, um, especially in this first category here, these properties are entirely in the floodway and floodway fringe. So there's only a percentage that can be developed in there right now. If it's all floodway friends, then it's 50%. But it, but if some of that is floodway and floodway friends, that percentage could, could go down.
Right.
So I mean, we could come back with like tax value information and stuff like that. Just keep in mind that it may not be as accurate.
Sure.
Talking to our, because in talking to our, our, uh, real estate group, they would literally have to go through all 446 parcels and kind of appraise them to see what the exact value would be.
I think an idea for an estimate, um, would make sense, especially if we might start talking about reallocating or raising taxes or, or, um, that kind of thing to try and figure out what the cost of this is going to be, whether it's going to be borne entirely by a handful of individual property owners or by more people in the city as a whole. Just understanding what the impact estimating would be. Hopefully there's a way to do that without having to pull that many deeds or, 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 but.
We can pull the tax values fairly simply. I won't say.
Okay. Or not the deeds, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course, my GIS folks might want to.
Mr. Brown, you broke up. We can't hear you.
No, I was just saying that my GIS folks might not agree that it's simple to pull, but hopefully it's fairly simple.
I got you. Um, so I guess, and then the next one would be a legal question to, um, clarify with Mr. York, because I know some of the, some of the emails, um, and some of the questions from the public have been with respect to this being a taking. Um, certainly with the ground level uses still being viable, I, I guess, and, and the general allowance for floodway, uh, restrictions, I, I don't think this would be legally considered a taking, but I wanted to, um, defer to our. Mr. York on it.
That's, that's why they have the 50% rule and the exemptions is to avoid, uh, takings. And so they, they've got relief built into the tax change to avoid, uh, takings.
Gotcha.
And I believe also the variance protocols as well, which I don't want to speak for David, but.
That's true. Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Fox, I saw your hand up a while ago. I didn't know. Uh, Commissioner Miller, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Fox.
Uh, yeah, I, I also need a little bit of information to clarify what the impacts are, whether that's monetarily or staffing resource. Ever. Um, and then a question. Um, sites are broken down by the size of the parcel. Um, did the, did that committee or as staff considered, um, looking at the zoning of the parcel to determine what development standards? looking at the zoning of the parcel to determine what development standards might be altered to allow flexibility for certain types of development?
Early on, the stakeholder group looked at the zoning for for those parcels. We can pull that information and bring it back. The only thing I can't take into account is if they were vacant property and they're in their zone something and they were going to rezone to redevelop. That'd be the only thing I can't really forecast. But but I mean, we can give the current zoning for these vacant properties.
Commissioner, I saw your hand a while ago, too.
Yeah, I I I'm not sure what the motion needs to be to um bring this back. I think there are a lot of questions. I don't know if we if we need to go through now and and list all those questions. I had a handful. Commissioner Fox did, Commissioner Miller did. Chairman, you did. I I don't know if we want to take the time now to go through all those or if there's a way for us to do these this after or after the meeting. But I think there's a, there's a lot of questions. There's environmental impacts, there's financial impacts, there's uh issues about buyout program, effective dates, rezonings. I mean, there's, there's still a lot of information. I think this is a pretty complicated situation. And Ben, I I think you know, yeah, it's hard for you to answer these questions and we get that. So um to to Commissioner Miller's comment, thanks for all of your work and staff's work on this. This is, this is complicated. So we're pressing you with some questions and they're they're hard to answer. But I think we need to try to dig down a little bit more and um get a better understanding of this for us to to us for for this committee to feel comfortable putting up um a recommendation forward. So um David, what what do I, what do I need to do to to um table this or bring it back to the next um text change committee meeting?
I think the chair can just say you're going to hold it at the table to hear more. Y'all really haven't had a chance to go through the actual text itself. Uh, it is, as everyone has indicated, a fairly complex text change. And that's why Ben uh presented it as he did without necessarily getting into the language. But I know the devil's in the details and you need to dive into the language at some point. And so I would suggest um in the remaining moments, having um members of the committee express what questions they can formulate now and suggest at the next meeting, you go over the text. That will likely create more questions. Um, but at some point, we need to dive into the text. So you all are comfortable with the language that you would be making your recommendation on.
Thanks, thanks, David. Myself, I had two questions. If we wanted to go through the questions now, uh, I don't know how many questions everyone has, but I just and I think my questions might be redundant, but it's just two that I have. And if we wanted to get those out of the way right now, uh, so that way, uh, Mr. Brown can come back to us with some answers by the next time we meet. Uh, let's, so let's, let's do that. Let's hold, let's present our questions and then we'll table this discussion for our next text change committee meeting. So I'll start with Commissioner Fox uh with your question so we can get him on record.
Okay, just a couple of bullet points. Um, wanted to clarify the impacts. Um, I need a little bit more information about transferring density and how that would work. Um, allowing some amount of flexibility in certain development standards. Um, and then uh looking at um how zoning was reviewed. Uh, because there, there may be an instance where you would want to treat um residentially zoned property differently. That's it for me.
Okay, Commissioner Miller.
Yes, my questions um with respect to the impact as well. Just some kind of estimate of the projected private sector cost. And I also have what the graphic on what the other cities do. And from Lake County and then other urban cities in North Carolina um have the one, the one pager on clarifying um some of the language with the intent on the um basically where the lines are and what all I think we've already been over that. Um, to Mr. Moore's question, the speaker about the zero five acre. Um, any additional information you have about what why that was chosen and and what some alternatives? And if it really is just that that's what the old regulation said and um if it's, if it's somewhat an arbitrary cliff like that, what some other alternatives might be if someone has zero point five one acre plot, for example? Um, I think that's, that's it. I think I I've noticed some other people's questions as well, but I will. Uh, oh, and then also um Ms. Harris's question. Would it be possible for the city to create a site where people could easily? What what would it take for the city to create a site where people could easily see what, how this impacts their property?
Thanks, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner O'Haver.
I think most of mine were covered. I may be a little redundant. I hope not. I would like to have some additional conversation about Ms. Maddox's comment about the effective date. Um, I don't know that's necessarily resources, want to get that on record, like have additional conversation about that. Um, I agree with Ms. Miller about the half acre and um I I really would like to see a comparison. Ben, and you mentioned uh municipalities here locally being more stringent. I'd like to see a comparison graphic of that just to to um set some framework. I am more, I am curious about about the buyout program and the appraisal and and sort of how all that works. I think that's, that's important. Um, and I think that, other than that, again, some of that might be redundant. But I think other than that, my questions have been covered with my fellow commissioners.
Thanks, Commissioner O'Haver. Um, uh, my two or three comments were also redundant. Mine was the effective date. Uh, echo what uh Ms. Maddox talked about. My second one was uh to see what others, our sister cities in North Carolina are doing uh surrounding development within floodplains. And we already talked about that. And then the third comment I had was the one pager uh piece of literature to clear up the confusion around uh floodplains, floodways and um, yeah, and developing in flood fringe. So I think um, yeah, the, all of my comments were echoed previously uh without further ado.
Sorry, can I jump in with one more thing? I I would be curious to to get a little bit more information in our next meeting about um how much of the, you know, again, an exhibit to really demonstrate. It kind of ties into Ms. Miller's comment about the GIS and Ms. Harris's comment about how much is mapped. I know a lot of this, a a lot of of the FEMA remapping has occurred. Get an idea of when that information is going to be available so that we can understand. You know, it is confusing for a property owner. Am I in the twenty percent that's mapped or am I in the eighty percent that's not mapped? And what are the requirements? So I would just be curious to understand at least of an estimate of the timeline. I know some of that lo lies outside of staff's capability to control, but just a little bit more around that to to make sure we understand what those issues are. Sorry to um forget about that one earlier.
Thanks, Commissioner O'Haver. Um, so without further objection, we we can table this discussion for our next uh text change committee meeting. Um, are there any other questions before we adjourn today's meeting? Saying none, uh, we'll adjourn our text change committee meeting of uh today and we'll reconvene back and go over these questions and comments that we had. Thank you, everybody.